Yes, we are, but that's okay.
Is that why they're all there?
Yes. Yes, because we got time to go back and fix.
Um, no, and I was one of those, I'm sorry.
We know who they were, 'cause you wrote them in.
They'd be Steve Ross, they'd be Pippinger, and then they'd be, uh, me.
I was like, they've not been sent out yet, and I'm not retapping. I had already made a copy.
I ain't nothing wrong with that, my booth.
Now, the one that I posted on the door.
You're like, I was over being mad at that day. And I said, I'll just.
I had a minute and I'll do it.
I'll just make this one official.
Can you take some questions, would you like a prayer for us?
For audio, or definitely.
Hold on, I'll wait on Jack. Good, let's pray. Most kind, gracious, heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and all your many blessings of life, Lord. We pray that you be with this body of commissioners as they get ready to take on the business at hand. And God may you always continue to bless our county and our nation. And God, as always, I ask that you be with little Landon. God just touch his body. First in your son, Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pete Parker.
Here.
Shane Bowman.
Here.
Greg Brooks. Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Musch Davis.
Here.
Christie Harden.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Here.
John Pippen.
Approval of amendments.
Question to approve.
Any discussion? Brokaw.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Kelly Morgan.
Sorry.
John Pippen.
John got me all.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Approval of reports of office.
Question to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Brokaw.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Matthew Trent.
Yes.
Approval of amendments, we've got three. Deborah Ann Davis. Robin B. Monroe. And Farming Stewart.
Both approved, all four here.
Any discussion? Brokaw.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Well, since I'm in here.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Matthew Trent.
Yes.
Okay, budget amendments for 101. We have number seven for a total of forty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cents. That's to allocate funds for refund of SRO grant funds not expanded in fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, number eight in 101 for a total of eighteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty cents. That's home security grant flow-through EMA, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, number nine for a total of seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and six cents. That's for pilot earmarked, three bonuses for three employees. Number twelve. Am I missing something? These two?
Yeah, you wanted to do amendments for the end.
Okay.
It's because of that, yeah.
I didn't know about these. Okay, we'll move the amendments for the end. Okay, uh, budget amendments for Pope County School Board for our name. Pope Town Courthouse. Uh, we have made some progress with the permit to connect the Highway sixty-four for property, uh, up on the east side. Uh, John, you wanna lay the sound off?
There has been a rule, entrance way. These will approve for that property on the Bill Blas property that was donated, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that has been done, it has been worked on by Grady Patterson with T-Dog, and our road superintendent, Roy Thomason. They have an agreement worked out, I think the final paper was going over to Lloyd today, if not, it'd be Monday. But it, it's been worked out, they've agreed on it. Uh, there is a document that I think the county secretary's been notified of that would need to be done for us to proceed with the road department doing the work at that location, which will save us certifications and inspection fees.
Did we, we did, the permit was approved or not?
It was, it, the last I heard, it was finalized, I don't know if he has signed it or not. As of three o'clock this evening. And I don't know if he received it back, but it, it, I've got it on the text, it has been done.
Okay.
It's ready to rock.
There's, talking with Eric Brooks, there's already a survey on that property, we don't have to have a new survey or anything.
That was one of the questions he had asked about that over east end, so, yeah, that's not a problem.
So, I want to make the motion that we, uh, pass the AED board to sell that property. Been waiting to do that for a while, waiting on a permit, and I think the permit's done now.
Have the, have the great AED agree?
I made the motion that we asked them. I'll be willing to go to their meeting and talk with them.
When's your next meeting?
Uh, technically, it'll be the first week of January, uh, but we may move it to December. Motion in seconds, any more discussion about that?
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Matthew Trent.
Yes.
Surplus property community center.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the one thing I want to ask, it's not on the agenda, I don't think, did you have the, the agreement on the agenda, Rob?
No, it's not. So, that was what Roy Jean brought, I talked to Commissioner Barker about, um, um, motions to suspend the roof with the interlocal agreement that Roy Jean brought to me on Monday. So, I do have it, I forgot to pass it out to me and go, so I wasn't in the meeting when passing it out, but it is an interlocal agreement between Pope County and the County Road Department.
Uh, but it's for the primary purpose of this agreement, of doing the property, you can do it under that same heading. Uh, under the courthouse, the property.
Okay.
We just discussed.
Okay.
You can, you can do it under it.
That's what you emailed us, right?
Yes, it is what you all had emailed, yes, if you, if anybody needs it, if you, if you need one tonight. I don't care to read. Would that need red?
I'd say as presented, it's not a resolution, it's a contract, it's a U.
So, to be the paper, we'll call it just interlocal agreement, make sure it's announced with that team. But if y'all accept, you'd have to present. Okay, so this would, uh, help us get the connection to sixty-four, he would be doing the work for us under this interlocal agreement. Yes, and that would also establish an interlocal agreement for anything that the county has that related, relates to doing work with the Pope County Road Department. Sanitation sites. Fire departments, anything that has there. The only thing that, that Roy said that you all might question is the dollar amount on number three, that twenty-five thousand. He can go up to twenty-five thousand on his side before anything has to go up to bid. That's how, I mean, that's a little bit different than what ours is, since it could be working through his side. But I also assured him that if there was anything that went out over that amount, that I would at least bring this back before a Buildings and Grounds Committee or a committee that was sufficient for whatever that work needed to be done before it come before the commission.
I make motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second. Does this resolution need to be written?
It's a contract, it goes, it's actually a contract agreement, it's just a resolution, it's what, uh, I mean, we can do it as presented.
Okay. Motion in seconds, any more discussion on that? Brokaw.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Matthew Trent.
Yes.
Okay, now, so the surplus property that you came to say.
Well, actually, that, well, that's, uh, rocks.
So. And I apologize not having the copies, this is what was emailed to you all as well. So, this would be resolution number eleven. Resolution reads as follows. Resolution to discharge surplus property wherein the following listed properties has fulfilled the intended usage and longevity and service of the county of Pope and its continued usage and has become suspect to the expected outcome with such property as, as follows. Ten old wooden desks, six filing cabinets, four drawers, five filing cabinets, five drawers, one set of wooden kitchen cabinets, one metal kitchenette and kitchen, seven wooden tables, three sets of metal shelving, fifty corded telephones, three TVs, five computer monitors, towers and keyboards, four reclines, two stationary chairs, two homemade signs, and the kitchen sink. Also, the fire department had numerous equipment that was at the end of its life and served its term, along with any other items that were damaged and the life expectancy had been breached and deemed unusable by the county executive and the department head. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Pope County Commission meeting in regular session on this the twenty-first day of November, twenty-twenty-four in pursuit to TCA Code five dash fourteen dash one oh eight, one and two, and any other laws of the state of Tennessee that the Pope County Executive's Office by effect of emergency water damage at the Copper Basin Community Center is and was at the time of cleanup authorized to sell or dispose of in part or as a whole salvage price or above or to the place of public sanitation site, the preceding properties which are hereby deemed unusable, unsalvageable, and/or surplus by the Pope County Commission in accordance to the TCA Code and any other applicable law or allowance of the state of Tennessee.
Motion to approve it?
Motion in seconds, any more discussion? Brokaw.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Matthew Trent.
Yes.
All right, supervision regulations from October meeting, we've got this resolution. To update the supervision regulations. We did have a workshop on that.
The workshop on that, everybody's, we want an agreement to go for, go ahead and figure it out.
The what?
I said on the workshop, wasn't everybody, they want an agreement to proceed.
Yeah.
I didn't make it to that one, so what was this?
We didn't have enough to make coral.
I went early once.
But me and John and maybe somebody else did.
Oh, I brought my napkin over here and then I said, I was.
It pretty much, it's, it's what they're already doing now. They're already going by this procedure. Uh, they'd sent the policy in, what, a year ago?
It's not really changed anything.
To get more information. And then, nobody ever got any more information. So, then it come back up because right now, we're not in compliance with what the, uh, planning regulations are actually doing. This just puts it in compliance with what they're doing already.
I think this goes along with state guidelines.
That it goes along with the state regulations.
That's what I got from the person that was here speaking.
Yes.
It's this follows the state guideline.
It should not affect, I think he said, any of the current things that they're facing right now as far as end regs or anything, as far as changing any plan dealing with the number, number of roads or how they combine.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. So, will this resolution number be changed?
Yeah.
Okay, so it should be eleven-two, twenty-four?
Yes.
Three seconds.
Motion in seconds, any discussion? Brokaw.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Matthew Trent.
Yes.
Okay, travel budget amendment from October meeting. This was a request that was turned in, it wasn't on the agenda in the last meeting. Any commissioner want to address this? It was just put on this agenda because it wasn't on the last. Well, I love the veterans, I thank you for your service, but I feel it's unnecessary, I drive down Chattanooga every day, all hours. It is outside of our travel policy anyway. Yeah. So, I mean, it's not.
I can drive the North across somewhere, I think so.
I know it's outside of policy, but then I have a hard time not reimbursing him his four hundred dollars. But that's just my thoughts. Everybody vote Kelly Morgan.
I don't have a problem with the money. My problem is, is us trying to figure out in the handbook the way this needs to be done, 'cause we're breaking our own rules. So, if we're gonna keep doing this, and we obviously are.
We shouldn't.
Well, we are, we always do.
Need to.
So, it, we, because it's not right for us to break our own rules. We're breaking the law. So, we need to fix something, that's all I've got to say about it, I mean, I don't care.
It should be free.
I just, you know.
Well, that, that's what I, I mean, pre-approved it for before.
Yeah, yeah.
That would have been the, the ideal.
But it still, unless we've got it in black and white, it, even getting it pre-approved is not gonna fix the problem. Because we're gonna be doing it, if we do it for one, we have to do it for everybody. So. So, and I mean, like I say, I'm not knocking, I'm not, I'm not wanting to make enemies here, and I'm not, I don't, you know, I want people to be able to get money back, but we gotta figure out a way of what we're gonna do, and we gotta stick to it. So, you know, maybe that, and I thought we had done that, but like I said, if we have, it don't matter, 'cause we broke it. So, we just gotta, I mean, that's just like, if anybody goes into any one of our elected officials' office and there is a certain criteria that you have to meet in order to get your business done, they can't break that law to get that business done for that person. So, we're breaking the law. We're, we're breaking it. So, we gotta fix that, that's all I've got to say about it, I mean, we just gotta fix that.
Well, then we need to have a handbook meeting going forward.
Yeah.
I think maybe we.
You're the chair, you're the chair on that, if you want to call it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I think maybe we probably need to revisit the travel policy.
Yeah.
And look at it, but, you know, and then, of course, at budget time, we don't agree with the travel thing either, so, but I think if we can get a good foundation.
I think we just need to get, I mean, we're gonna have to get a good foundation here to where we're not.
Distance, distance.
I mean, I could understand if this was Nashville or something, this is Chattanooga.
I mean, Chattanooga, that's, I'd agree.
I drive it everywhere. I know. Do you want us, do we want to look at that, or do you want to wait till after the holidays?
Just go ahead and say it, even if it's after the holidays.
Can we look at January?
Yeah.
I don't know who all's on that committee.
I think I am, but we're like, let's keep.
Right off the top of my head, I don't know.
Are we gonna deal with the request that's been made? I mean, I understand having a handbook committee look at future, but are we gonna, are we gonna deal with this?
Well, I think we're gonna have to vote on it, or somebody's gonna have to make a motion.
Yeah.
So.
Well, like I said, we've already done it here a few months ago, we, we, we done it for Judge Townsend.
No, we didn't.
This is a different, a different one.
What was that under?
She was in Nashville.
Okay, but it went over. It went over what we had said that we were paying. See, once again, that's what I'm saying, we can't seem to have a direct.
Well, I think it's hard when it comes to set amounts, because every office's training is a little different than the other, so one office might require.
Well, and then that's another thing though.
One thousand, one thousand five hundred.
Cap it somewhere, it's, it's gotta happen.
And it, and it has to be either, we're, we're not sticking to the part, if it's not mandatory, then we, we just give the free, open travel. I mean, I'm just asking, I don't care.
I think they just hope for her doing her license.
For doing it before the meeting.
Yeah, that, that problem, once again. We need to make clear about that.
Before the meeting in January? That way, I mean, we know.
And that committee, and that committee is Kelly, me, Danny Carver, Shane Bowman, and Christie Harden.
Okay.
So, you want to do six?
Six.
Is that okay?
All right, Keith.
And that's on the sixteenth of January.
You don't, okay, I didn't know, you had your answer. All right, uh, current Pope County economic status, Commissioner Seck.
Catrice, I hope you're ready to answer some questions. Sorry, I want to just go. After the last month's meeting, I got hit up by five different individuals at local restaurants. Three at local gas stations, dealing with, when we're gonna raise the taxes. And when we're gonna enter this bill of tax. With the idea that they apparently took it from watching on YouTube or from the paper article, which we were gonna have to do it, you know, right now, here in the next couple of weeks, it was a pressing issue that would be done at any time. I had different ones make this statement on both property tax increase and will tax, and my response was, to the best of my knowledge, that's not the issue at this time. And Catrice, please, I'm wrong, when I'm wrong, go ahead and throw it out there, so somebody will clear it. We've got one point seven million in debt service, and not all commissioners look at the money the same way. Make that real clear very again. I look at it one way, somebody else may look at it totally different. But we're talking about, they were talking about the, mainly, the ambulance service increase. That's about, what, one point two million?
One point two increase, yes.
Increase, uh, increase, let's make that clear, increase, amount not total. Well, one point seven million is right now in debt service. We will be dropping debt service off this year except for a remainder of forty-seven thousand-ish, a little less than forty-seven thousand next year, that will clear our debt service tab. We've got somewhere around two hundred thousand in money going in from CDs, uh, Ms. Birchfield. A year on CDs at current rates, and of course, they drop twelve, six, seven, whatever, but that one is going in. About three hundred? I was trying to give it a low estimate that way, but I was wrong, somebody, but thank you for that. So, we've got, and we also have twenty point, twenty, twenty pennies, is that correct, going in two?
Twenty cents, yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty in debt service.
Okay, so we will be freeing up to twenty. We will be losing six hundred and fifty thousand, that is a donation from the schools for the purpose of payment on that debt service because some of those schools are involved in the debt service fund. Okay, so they're gonna six hundred and fifty thousand a year. So, you take the six hundred and fifty away from the one point seven million, you've got a million and fifty thousand. Then you've got three hundred thousand on the side coming in through debt service, the, from the CDs. But you've got an increased amount in the ambulance service of one point two? I'm saying that we're pretty well washed right now, we're firm. And the way I'm seeing the money coming in, we are not in dire need of a tax increase at this time, period. That can change at any time. We've got schools coming up again here in probably two years. We've got around one point four, five million set into a capital.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay for the sole purpose of building those new schools from a half million people voted in. And that will increase every year.
How much does it cost to build a school?
Well.
That, that is a questionable question.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's absolutely a questionable. There's also a question that come up about that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. No, the county cannot capture that money from the school board. That was a donation from the school to the county to assist in paying for the schools. They will get that money, they will retain that money, they will not be sending it to us. What they do with it, that's, that's dealing with their budgeting, their board. So, like I said, the way I'm seeing it, we're not in dire need of raising taxes or implementing the will tax at this time.
Those were just, like, you basically reiterated everything that was said at the ambulance thing. Those were options in case it came to that. Nobody said.
It was.
We have to raise taxes.
No, no argument here?
If.
And I didn't hear that that night.
It was.
Maybe it was others did.
It was, you don't want to deplete your debt service, because we do have schools coming up. So, do we wanna take all the twenty cents out of there? No.
No.
You want to leave it and grow, because even though there's one point, what'd you say in there?
One point.
In the capital for the school?
One point four.
One point four? How long's that been in there?
Well, we get about forty thousand a month.
So, it's still not gonna be.
Oh, no, no, it's not.
No. So, you don't wanna deplete it out, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna have a big, huge tax increase. That's stuff that we'll discuss and talk about once we know what the penny is. Once we know exactly what everything is bringing in and moving out.
But the reason I brought this up tonight is because of the high number that approached me. If my understanding approached at least one other commissioner above the mounts.
Yeah, I mean, they've asked about it.
As to they thought from apparently either what was said that night or from the article in the paper, that we were fixing to do one of the other right now. And that's just, doesn't.
No, I think that's just, that's our options if it's not. And I thought that was pretty clear. I mean, I only had one person ask me, but they hear taxes, or they hear one point two million dollars, and technically, we don't have a lot of money to play with.
No, we don't.
So, that's where they panic, as they should, the taxpayers.
I mean, I, I mean, I panicked too, because what if something happens? I mean, we ended up giving races before we knew how much an ambulance service was gonna cost. We just flew by the seat of our pants with that one, we really did.
Well, and that's why we didn't want to take the two hundred thousand dollars from the school system to do that, because that's money we didn't know for sure, would we get it, probably so.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we use that, or we could be using that toward schools, or the ambulance.
We did hoping and praying when we did that. And thank goodness, it worked out, but I mean, we have to.
Now, we actually all knew that debt service was dropping, and it was one point seven million. And we knew that six hundred and fifty thousand, that was coming from the school, that's not in question.
Well, nobody's questioning that.
Well, I mean.
But we didn't know how much our ambulance was gonna cost.
What we did know was what was coming up and what the expenditures.
We just knew it was not gonna be cheaper.
Yeah, we knew it was gonna be cheaper.
So, but.
Anyway, that's all I had on that end.
Not everybody wanted to do the two hundred thousand.
Office location assignment, Commissioner Seck.
Oh, I'm on that, Building and Grounds Committee met the other day, I mean, they're dealing with. Was it just one location, that was the small courtroom?
Yes, we've got multiple calls in there.
Okay, well.
I got called that not, that we had our building committee meeting, because there was another meeting supposed to be in here, and they moved it to the library.
Yes.
So.
There's been several, several times that that's happened, we've had executive sessions that we, you know, we've been in smaller rooms that could not hold us all, and.
This is literally the only building in the county right now that we can have a meeting in, because our community center is out of commission. I mean, we can't, we can't be in it. I mean, they just disturb those bestows, like they're cleaning it up.
There was two recommendations that night for two other rooms for the veterans affairs to be offered. Have you talked to the VA officer?
No, I'm not.
I think it was two oh six and two oh seven, when we looked at it.
Yes, it's two oh six and two oh seven.
Those are pretty good sized rooms too.
Yeah, they are.
Two oh six is the one that's on the south hall, I'm on two oh seven, the one from the south hall that Gina Jason goes on.
I'll make a motion that we request the VA, well, I'll make a motion, we move the VA office to either two oh six or two oh seven, whichever office he picks, because we need to clear that room to have.
This is a have to, this is not any personal, we have to have that room.
So, are both of those still, but, I mean, Jason don't use the two oh seven anymore?
They're both open, we looked at them the other night.
So, that's the motion. Add a load of the room up to actually have beer board meetings and other public meetings that require room for public meetings. At the same time, there's something going on in here.
Have you talked, have you talked to him?
Not a while.
I don't know, I was curious as his thoughts on it. I mean, I know we're, I know we're in a bind, but I was just curious.
I mean, at this, at this point, we have one room in the whole county that we can meet in. I mean, it's ridiculous that we had to send someone to the library the other night, because we needed to have a building committee meeting.
We went to Baton City Hall for a little bit.
Yeah, I, I mean, we cannot keep doing this, I mean, I, I don't want, no feeling.
My find is, is when we're in executive session, we got people sitting in here waiting hours. And we need to be the one we can shoot over and come back as fast as we can. That instead of having to go up and down steps and get them to elevators or this or that. That's, you know, that's just the other reason of, and I don't care what room it is. And if there was another, and I'm down the hall, that was big enough for all of us to get into with lawyers, the other day, we had to go to Robbie's office.
We were smushed.
And we were smushed in there. Our law, our attorneys couldn't even sit down. They, they still couldn't sit down.
It's just, it's got, it's a have to.
So, it's just, that's where I, and it's not against anybody.
No.
I mean, if it was the dog, I don't know about it, or, you know, whoever, I mean, we need that room. And, and I want him to have a nice room, I mean, I, by all means, but it's just, that one is just.
That is our second largest room in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Besides this one.
Yeah.
We have to have it.
It's just, you know.
Motion in a second, any more discussion?
I have a question. So, our other office, Jason's other office, you all see, we have history in there. What would, if he decides that he wants that room, what would we do with all of our stuff? Because our room that we're in now, we have no rooms of that.
There's a few.
Is there rooms up here?
There's some rooms up here for storage, you know.
But there's filing cabinets full.
Where can we place them?
I don't mind, I wouldn't mind him if he had to take that room, but we would just need to find a place for all that stuff and help.
What about them two closet rooms that we had to meet in that night? What's in them? I mean, that holds a lot of filing cabinets, like, it's not a whole many people.
What about this room that's over here?
I think that's, that's the archives room. That's the archives room, it's here. Now, I don't know if one of those could go to alter four archives.
If, if they're not required to still be kept in the office, then they'll need to go before the public records committee, who will determine if they need to be thrown away or if they need to be kept for historical purposes. They need to be kept for historical purposes, they can be stored in the archives room.
What's in the old, what's in his old office? Just John, that could be cleaned out.
Yeah, that was, yeah, and that's what I thought, if you're gonna do that, because somewhere for me to have, for me to be able to store or put stuff, just a small, and that's.
So, whichever other room he don't take, Ben can have the other one, but.
Yeah, I mean, either of those rooms ought to work for Jason's extra filing cabinets and things.
When we used to move everything out, when the flood and to fix the floors and everything, I had school kids to volunteer for community service hours to come in and help us to move all that out and then back in, and even our office when they replaced the flooring in our office.
Is that something you can move to? Can we, can we get those moved?
That's what you all seek to do as a commission, I'll work with and try to make accommodations.
I will say, y'all can have that room, that, the old vet's office.
So, that would give, I mean, that would open up another one as well, so, and that's, and I'm just saying, that office would work good for being that little one. He just needs somewhere to be able to store stuff and be able to put some things in, and not that he won't be there, so. Yeah. And there's a whole nother wall on the other side of that, the best I remember.
Yeah, there's like two or three.
There are two, three little rooms there. We'll make it, if that's what you all want. I'll work on my end if they're willing to work mine, and try to get that.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Steve Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pipenger?
Yes.
And Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
BRC grant update, County Director.
I'd had some questions on this BRC grant that came up, because when it came out, and I, I think everyone's seen it, there was questions, why didn't we get millions of dollars like some of the other counties? That part of the grant that we received is for a lot of the residivism that will be worked through our libraries. This is through Southeast Tennessee Development District, it's a ninety-four thousand dollar grant. But I also want to remind everybody that a lot of those counties that got a bigger grant than we did with this one, we'd already received a twenty-six million dollar grant that were, that was for the internet to encompass the county. So, that's the, the BRC grant. Also, this week, kind of dealing with grants, there's a Local Parks and Recreation Fund grant that I've spoken with, the Local Parks and Recreation, to let them know this is a fifty-fifty granting opportunity. I know most of the times, we don't like fifty-fifty grants, because it does require so much match, but this is up to a million dollars. I know that those of you all that's been on the commission for a term or two, and I asked, this meeting, first meeting will occur on the fourth, I asked specifically about the pool at the east side and basin. And this should be one that qualifies for that grant, anything dealing with our parks and grant. So, and it does not limit us to if something's done at one, it has to stay at one. This can be divided with the way that I understand from Southeast Tennessee Development District. So, even though it's a million dollars, you shoot for the moon, I hope we can get a million dollars, but that'll require a five hundred thousand dollar match, but at least half the cost to what it would take, and those of y'all that remember the price of getting some of the stuff. But this could be anything, and a lot of it as well as dealing with ADA. If you're like me and you have older parents, trying to get them in and out and around ball fields, it absolutely sucks, for lack of better words, whenever they want to come and watch their kids and grandkids and be a part of the family. So, this will also be a way, because you have to be ADA compliant. I am currently on all my title, four, eight, ten, twelve, six. What else, Catrice, there's about six or seven, so all this will be becoming down the pipe. One other, there is also a BID grant through the ECD that came out this week. This is seven hundred million dollars coming down for broadband and internet throughout the state of Tennessee. Talking with Southeast Tennessee Development District, we can roll our twenty-six million dollar last mile grant, that was the name of something we go, we should be able to roll it into this to help bring broadband internet access to the fourth quarters of Polk County, once those funds start to be released, so. It's just a little grant update, because like I said, I had a lot of questions whenever people saying, oh, we only got ninety-four mil, or ninety-four thousand, how come some of these others got eight, ten million? We'd already received twenty-six million in our last mile.
To bring up that internet, so we did the train the other day. And, you know, I had AT and D phone service, the only place I didn't have it was at the powerhouse. I had it the whole way, it went all three lines, AT and D were, it was crazy, because I was getting more calls, and I was like, I'm supposed to be on it, I'm supposed to be out of service, but it, it works the whole time.
And, and a lot of that's because, Bo testified, and I think Catrice can too, having family in that mountain area with the AT and D tower, Daniel as well, but that's not when they have that AT and D tower in their lunch area.
Yeah.
But not Horizon, it's brought.
Horizon didn't work, but that AT and D did.
No, that's not how it works, I don't have it this year, Ben. The tower where it needs, I got AT and D.
Yeah, well, yeah, it worked on over here, but it was, it worked the whole way, except, and he was working at the, where we stopped is like the train to go back, yeah.
I get a lot, I have some of those.
They got an AT and D power in the park.
Yeah, my park was working it farther.
They got an AT and D there right there.
Yeah, it worked the whole way. That was good, I mean, you know, but that wires, and the internet was too good at that fire station, so.
Sanitation site update, Director.
So, sanitation sites, the farter sites up and going, I've not heard one single complaint. If anybody wants to complain about how nice the farter is, please come and see it. But it, it is extremely nice for those that have been out to it. The South Pole site fence is up, the only thing that likes to be installed is the automatic gate opener. That will be done, because once the RFP is given out for the pads at the South Pole sanitation site, those RFPs are out currently, and there is a large interest that, that I have had so far with those two site, or those two pads at the South Pole site. Trying to think, that will be next month, that that does come before the commission to take, to open, to try to expand the South Pole site. And just so everybody's clear, the, the intention is, is to get the new pad done, and then South Pole will not close. I've been asked numerous times, how long I'm gonna have South Pole not closed? I want to get the new pad done and have that operational, and then that way, we'll not interfere with service. Those two pads are gonna have to offset somewhat, I know Danny and I have talked about it, but once we get the bids in, and everybody that I've spoken with, I've let them know that, I can't tell them exactly where those pads are gonna go, because we waited to see how the fence laid, see how much room we had to try to open it up, but we would need to have a sanitation committee meeting with whoever the bid winner is, whenever that comes up, to lay those pads out a little better on the sanitation site.
Fire truck, Director.
I was contacted by the city of Cleveland, Chris Bates, about an opportunity for a fire truck from the city of Cleveland. I have, I think you all have that as well in a, that we emailed out. Mush and I went down the other day and watched this fire truck operate, correct Mush?
Correct.
This truck is a two thousand and one model with fifty-five thousand miles. This truck has been put through the shop at the city of Cleveland. This truck, I asked the question, if this truck came to Polk County today, and if it came into the Polk County line at twelve o'clock noon, and Jackie could get me a tag by one, and insurance could have an effect by two, and I took this truck to either the east or the west pole, wherever it's determined to go, did that truck go fight a fire at five o'clock PM? And the answer was?
Yes.
Yes. The only thing that, the batteries on the truck are a twenty-twenty-one, and the truck fired up just as quick as anything else. But everything's there, I've sent you all the specifications on the pumps and everything. The final negotiating price on this truck is twenty-five thousand dollars. I tried to pull them on down to twenty and to twenty-two-five, that's whenever they let me know that there was ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of apparatus that's going with the truck, and that they would keep the truck in water flowers. Correct Mush?
That's it.
So.
We're giving fire guard.
I have a resolution.
Truck got six brand new parts.
Yes. If I'm not mistaken, give me that for a second. As you can see, there is a letter from the city of Cleveland. It's a resolution. Authorized the purchase of this truck. Authorized the purchase of this truck. So this will be resolution 11-3? Three, no, they had another one. Is that right, Jackie? 11-3? It's a resolution 11-3, resolution of the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee to purchase surplus property from Cleveland. Whereas the county of Polk has identified a need for a new or used fire, fire rescue vehicle and whereas Cleveland City Fire Department has a vehicle that will satisfy this need of Polk County and has offered such a vehicle as to be a 2001 International Truck, which has just been through the city's automotive shop, had full service, maintenance inspection, new tires, aluminum ladders that are certified and an estimate between 10 to 15,000 dollars codes and extras with such truck bearing event number as 1HTSDADR51H354226. With the other such indications attached to this page and whereas the offer has been made in writing for the sum of $25,000. Now therefore be it resolved by vote. The board of the county commission of Polk County meeting in regular session on this 21st day of November 2024, the county executive is authorized to purchase before said vehicle for the use of Polk County, Tennessee.
Second. It's good.
Lawyer with hand phone.
Oh, that's coming up now.
Okay. I heard it was. Might as well just go ahead and ask.
My question is, they got two or three more.
I know you guys are really good process.
So that's another thing and and I and I understand there are different ones of you that tried to get to go with me. I appreciate it. I know y'all had things that came up, but I'm going to kind of point to Mush, but he also said that this was not a one and done. And I was, I want both of these fire departments to understand. This is not a one and done. Whoever gets this truck, that there's, there's, there's going to be more coming. Correct, Mush?
Correct.
But also the truck that replaced this truck was a cost of 1.8 million dollars.
59, 48, 59 dollars.
The next truck that they have, they're paying 2.2 million dollars. So trucks are a million and a half, $2 million and we're getting it for 25, bring us a bunch. So there, there, there's going to be some more in the, in the years ahead as they're working towards. And the only reason why they're getting rid of this truck, the man told us, he said, my men are spoiled. They don't want to ride in an older truck whenever they've got a brand new one coming out.
And they maintain their trucks very well.
Yes.
Now this is a five pound truck.
Any more discussion? Real call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.?
And then Keith, you have that budget memo?
Uh, yeah, some more.
Hold on, it's good.
Number 12. And Fund 101. Fund 101, Amendment Number 13, Undesignated Fund Balance to General Admin, other equipment, $25,000 for Polk. The budget is county executive.
I will put them though. There were different ones that were turned in. Since drought earlier, the body cams that were turned in in the RFP, they all met what you all had asked for except for there was one that didn't have as much storage. Is that correct?
Yes, honestly, the only one that met what we needed was the one you're looking at there was top of the building didn't meet the, meet the storage requirements that we would need for two offices, I mean.
And which one?
The custom signals? The custom, they were still the small stuff. It was everything we needed.
So custom was the one that met the need that you had?
Correct.
And that was the amount of 58,496.
Yes, all that closure and the back rank covered that full amount.
Correct. So I make the recommendation based off of what to put through to leave for customs. I submitted in the RFP.
Motion, Kate Brooks? Second. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.?
Yes.
Samantha Fries?
Yes.
Employee bonus, make a paper.
I passed out two resolutions I emailed earlier today asking how to get that amount of Christmas bonuses by a couple of county employees. I'm in the courthouse and there was some other discussion about some Christmas bonuses and I did go get the trees and ask her to work up a, a Christmas bonus, which I appreciate her taking the time to do that. And then I did talk to her later about doing a, a reduced amount after some of it. There are two, the two resolutions, one's a high number, one's a lower number, one's a $2,600 bonus for full time active overview, the other one is a 1,300.
Well, I thought it was a policy. What do you give about this, the same year we gave it? Is that correct?
No, it's not a policy. It's something that we just never have done, you know, we don't. There's a couple of things that come up. There's a couple of things that come up on that. When I was head up, I was asked if I'd looked at the money. I said I had not. After coming into the courthouse and some conversation, I did talk to Catrice. I went in her office, sat down, I said, well, I ain't sure what I'm going to do. She said, what was it? You're not fixing to ask me to work up a bonus or something along that lines? And I was like.
The rumor mill was running, yes.
The rumor mill was running, but I, see, I just didn't get up that date.
I never seen.
Before I got the court case. So after we talked a little bit and looked at some money, we know that we, we had the COVID money for the last several terms, we did run into the fund balance this year. Our current is what, 1.6? Fund balance, Catrice? No, I'm sorry, 6 million.
Yeah. I'm still like 1.6.
6 million.
Last year it was.
6 million. Last year was around 4 million. So the dumping caused us increase now. Generally, we don't, you know, we look around for the money. We haven't the money this time. If I hadn't had the money, I wouldn't have asked her to work it up. We may not have the money next year, but the employees, I'm sure, will take what they can get when they can get it. I know it's not custom to give a raise and a pay Christmas bonus the same year, but I did, I did have it put on the agenda.
We've got one every year. I don't, I mean, I know that maybe what y'all talk about, but every year since we started getting these, we've got one every year, regardless of a raise, I assure you. Every year.
I know when I, when I was in the budget director, we rotated it if they got, because that's how we come up with doing the bonuses was because they had us working on a 97, 1997 pay schedule and wouldn't give raises.
Yeah.
And so we implemented doing the bonus.
Yes.
I've been gone for a long time, so I don't know what y'all, I don't know what they do now.
We have been doing bonuses in lieu of, in lieu of raises.
Well, yeah, because we haven't had the money.
Because we didn't know for sure that we'd have the money for raises the next year. And we did, this is the first time that I can remember that we gave raises and looked at the bonuses as well, but this is the first time we've had this kind of fund balance in November. Probably last 15, 18 years.
Don't even realize raised before this year. How long has it been, you mean? Or they might know. The last raised before this year, what, three years ago?
It was right before we got, um, because you guys did the contract trailers later that said to not do raises and salaries on one time money, which is what y'all announced the budget with on COVID. So that was in 22.
Retention.
Right. Well, but y'all gave raises. The COVID bonuses was different. That was.
What is that word?
That was the same year that I got a bonus and raise because it was COVID.
But this would be equal to the amount of the raise. Right, John?
The high, high end would be a dollar, the high end would be a dollar 25 and equal to a dollar 25 an hour, 2,080. The low end would be 60, two and a half cents.
I'm just looking at either, either, either one of them. This year, we had to come up with 321,000 for the raises. And so it's going to be 400, either 452,000 we've spent counting the bonuses or 565,000 we've spent on that. Doesn't mean I don't think y'all don't need it. I'm just doing my due diligence. Because I, after, I mean, I'm elected to be a good steward of the money. So doesn't mean I don't think y'all need a raise and I'm not against a raise by any means. I'm just saying, we got a lot of money kind of. Come budget time, where are we going to be at? That's my question. So what are your thoughts on what, what's everybody's thoughts on your thinking?
What Kelly said is not that, you know, I'm for money, everybody's for money, but you know, we got this debacle talking about the AMS contract, you know, ever since this came up, we just had big spill on that about raising taxes and stuff.
Nobody wants to raise taxes, man.
Right. I know.
We done said. Two, three firehouse we have following it.
You know, maybe you go into the handbook committee when we go into that discuss, you know, a, a set way of doing this, you know. One year we look at raises, one year we look at bonuses.
But, okay, so I don't know. I think from a conversation I had with someone, I think maybe someone had kind of maybe promised them that this was almost a done deal. So that being said, what's everybody's thoughts on these two resolutions of what we're going to do?
I think with all that's, that's going on right now, I don't mean to be a, you know, a speckler here, but that's a little far reached to do it.
Than the low one, the, the lower one? I'm just trying to get, if y'all are going to say no to these, is there a lower amount? I'm just trying to say it so.
We could figure out some numbers.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like if it's no for these, is there another amount that anybody would feel comfortable with?
Can we have a workshop on it so we can look at numbers instead of what's going about?
Instead of just sitting here on a whim, if we could do something like.
I, I understand that too, but.
But I would consider something, you know, lower. I want everybody to like a bonus for Christmas or something. That'd be.
I want to be honest with you, since I am presenting this, I just want to make it clear, the comments about telling anybody it's almost a done deal did not come from me.
No, that didn't say it came from you.
No, I'm just making sure that that's because I'm the one presenting. That would, you know, because I have talked to several employees, I haven't told any of them that I thought it was a done deal by any case. Told them I didn't know it passed, but I am making a motion for the lower cost amount.
I'll take it, man.
Make a motion for what? We can't hear.
1,300 for full time?
For what?
The lower, the lower section is 62 cents per hour.
Well, it's going to, it's going to get, I mean, have it by Christmas. I think they normally they want to have it by Black Friday. That's the tradition it's been forever so you can get the better bills with.
$500 bonus cross.
Extra money.
What's the $500 bonus crossboard? Oh, we didn't figure out.
Our office has about 25% that are going to qualify for that because nobody moved to work publicly, so we'll throw that in there for you. Maybe about six hours of giving, so we're going that up.
Now this, the, and the lower was, this needs to be read. Can I, Mr. Chairman, would you? Be all right? I get the county executive.
That'd be fine, yeah.
So this would be resolution 11-4? Is that right, Jackie?
Yes.
Resolution 11-4, the resolution of the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee to provide pay incentives whereas the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee sees a need to improve working conditions for its employees. Whereas the legislative body of Polk County is aware that it has relied on a bonus to help minimize increase in the cost of living. Whereas it is the desire to give a one time, non-recurring bonus this current fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, this the 21st day of November 2024, that all full time employees obtained one year of consecutive work time or more employed as of November 1, 2024 shall receive a bonus of 1,300 and any part time employee with the same attributed time shall receive a bonus of $650. Any full time employee, employee who has worked less than six months of consecutive work as of November the 1st shall receive a bonus of 650 and any part time employee who has been employed less than six months of the year, does not regularly work every month, shall receive a bonus of $325. Ag extensions employees shall receive a flat rate bonus of 325. Exception, no bonus paid to help department employees due to state grant funding. This resolution shall take effect in the passage of the public welfare requirement.
Got a motion and second. Any more discussion? Real call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
I'm going to put an input in there. I think we're looking at some inconsistency in our monies coming forward, so I'm going to have to vote no. Y'all going to hate me for it, but I'm sorry.
Debbie Davis?
I'd rather hear another pass.
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
No.
Kelly Morgan?
I'm torn, guys. I just hope they come up with the money. That's all. I mean, I want them to have it. I don't know.
Say it again, please.
I said it's $130,000 on a 6.2 million fund balance.
Okay, sorry, I was hot.
That's what I said.
Well, I mean, I know that is that. Jeez, I don't know, partner wants to say.
No pressure, but there's three of, about three down, you may be the signing vote.
Don't tell me that. I mean, you're going to be talked about either which way, we've talked about during the raises, so. I don't even think about it, honestly.
We would have considered a lower number.
I don't think that nobody wants to do a workshop.
I would have.
That's the thing. I don't think that was not going to be a talk.
We would have considered a lower number than 1,300. But nobody wanted to consider.
Something, won't we do that? I don't know. I've been in both their shoes. Everybody's waiting on me. I don't know what I'm doing, so. I don't know.
Yes, no, guys? Yes, no, class?
I don't know, guys.
Flip a coin.
Flip a coin.
Flip a coin.
The department will say yes. Am I the last?
No.
What is it again? Two, what is it again?
I'm what?
About pass, pass, yes, no, yes, yes, no.
123, eight, too far for the 1,300. So I'm going to say yes on the contingency that we put a policy together that states that we rotated due to certain circumstances.
John Pippen Jr.?
Yes.
Samantha Fries? I got one, two, one, two, three, four, five, yes. Two, no. Three, pass.
Three, pass. Is that like a?
So is it, or hung?
Hung, jury.
Needs one to pass.
Anybody want to consider a little bit less? You'll get more yeses.
That's the reason I passed.
Yeah.
So what, what are you thinking then?
Five hundred, six hundred, something like that, seven hundred even.
Or you said fifty even.
What if we just, everybody compromise here and let's go to a thousand?
How about let's compromise again, go to eight?
No, well, let's just bite the bullet and compromise and everybody get it past and give them a thousand.
What's that talking?
I don't know.
I'm in on that.
So if you do a thousand, what are you doing for part-time?
Uh, be five hundred.
Whatever the difference is.
Whatever the difference they have there.
That was in that.
Put it in a motion.
Okay. Make a motion to do a thousand, do the part-time, whatever that reduces it down to, though. I don't know. I don't have that figure.
I think it went to half. It went from thirteen, uh.
Yeah, thirteen to six.
Twenty-six, thirteen to thirteen to six fifty?
Six fifty.
So it'd be a thousand to five hundred.
Can I?
Using the same formula for your part-time?
Katrina, you said six-point-two million in the fund balance, is that what you said?
Can I ask one, one favor, though? Can it be flat? Because if y'all start cutting down, you're putting even more work on, on hers to get cut down. So, I just want to be sure.
We said a thousand. So it nets at least a thousand. That's why we've always done that. You can't get any less than that.
For everybody.
So I don't think that's fair for the full-time people to get what the part-time people. That's, that's just my thoughts.
All I'm asking is, is if they're a full-time employee, it's flat. If they're a part-time employee, it's flat.
So do like five hundred and a thousand.
Correct. And that way, she don't have to go sit down and divide out hours and try to do like she's already done ten times. This will be her third time.
That'll work.
Is that, is that, have we got a motion on that?
Is that all right, Katrina? I know it saves you a lot of work. Is that okay?
Debbie made that.
Thousand and five, even.
That's on the party. That's the way.
We still going to set a policy on that?
Yes.
I mean, we can talk about, we can talk about it.
We're having a meeting.
Well, I mean, it just kind of falls back to the whole travel thing. So, if you're doing things one way and then.
Yeah, going forward.
Have, I mean, have something. I don't care either which way. If we implement bonuses, then let's budget for it at budget time, and then it's not an issue, and they know they're getting it.
We were told not to put bonuses in budget.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to think about it, we need to think about that during budget time.
And we've gave it to the department how many times? They're not even under our budget.
So, that's what, that's all I'm saying. So we're not surprised, and they're not sitting here.
And that shouldn't.
Not knowing if they get it or not.
Now, this, this motion was for one oh one and one sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, that correct? Since we're not doing it off of paper, I just want to make sure it's clear in the motion.
The mo, what now?
The motion was for one oh one and one sixteen employees, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Teresa, that's, that's what the paperwork showed.
Move it to the thousand.
No, I, I said one oh one, one sixteen were the two reflected, is what you worked up.
Was just one oh one and sanitation employees. It's not road department. Got, got their bonuses?
Yeah. So I, this one, make sure it's clear on the motion.
So it's a thousand and five hundred?
I've seen it on the.
I need a second.
Second.
I thought you had a second.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
I thought you had a second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippin, yes?
Yes.
Matthew, yes?
Fund balance, make some moves.
Okay, so this is the fund balance policy that the comptroller recommended we have when they approved our budget this year. Um, I sent it to C task. Basically, the template is a lot of from the C task example. I did put the twelve percent in there that you guys had decided on. But all this is, is just to give us guidance for Pope County management in regarding to maintaining adequate levels of fund balance and cash flow in the general fund and in the general debt service fund. It's just to mitigate risk and provide backup for revenue shortfall. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Do we have to read it? It's not a resolution.
No, no, I mean, that's just a policy. So basically what this is, it says that when we get in budget time, that we need to have at least twelve percent of our expenditures in our fund sum out amount, which roughly, we never had an issue with that. We haven't had an issue with that. C task recommends fifteen percent, but we, you guys want it to come in a little lower at twelve percent. That's basically.
That we're, we don't get in no conflict or get in trouble with that.
On the debt service?
On general one oh one, you got temporary dish payroll expenditures immediately for six months. Is that, how's that going to affect the way it's calculated?
Well, it's done. It's so it says, if something happens and we are twelve, uh, less than twelve percent of the total annual expenditures, or if the county issues a tax anticipation note to meet the cash flow needs, we will have to do one of the following, and this is stuff that we've all, it's done, been done before. You can either, basically, it's reduce non-payroll expenditures, put a freeze on purchasing non-essential items, reduce the overall general fund expenditure budget, ship the property tax, or increase another source of revenue. Basically, things we've already, we already do at budget time. We just don't want to be below twelve percent.
Is that the same language it is for the debt service policy?
Yeah, it's a little different because the debt service, I'll read it, just because it is different. So, it is the practice of Pope County to pay the principal and interest requirements on the county's debt obligations from the debt service fund. Each year, the budget committee shall determine or estimate the principal and interest requirements of Pope County and recommended sources of revenues to meet these actual or projected requirements. Additionally, it shall be the policy of Pope County to begin each fiscal year with the balance of cash or investments in debt service fund to conservatively calculate amount adequate to meet the cash flow needs, budget contingencies, emergency contingencies, variable rate contingencies, and future forecasted needs. The cash flow requirement component is the majority of local county revenues come from property taxes. Property taxes are levied for a specific year or generally collected in the second half of the fiscal year. For this reason, it is common that the county to, for the county to expand more than it collects during the first half of the fiscal year. Uh, for this reason, it shall be the policy of Pope County to begin each fiscal year with a sum of cash or investments equal to the debt service fund requirements scheduled to expand during the first six months of the next fiscal year. This amount will typically equal six months of interest and expense payment, expense on the county's total indebtedness unless the county schedules principal payments in the first six months of the fiscal year. Generally, except for any short-term capital outlay notes, the county does not schedule principal payments in the first six months for this reason. So, most of our payments come in after the taxes are counted. And it just says we'll review this, and Patrice will review it at budget time.
How will this apply to debts on those if we have the debt service fund paid out? Is there still a percentage?
Well, this is not said on a percentage. It just says you have to have your amount for your interest and principal payments. So if we don't.
If you don't, then it doesn't.
Yeah. That's why we get to a percentage.
We have to vote on this?
Mm-hmm, since it's a policy.
I make the motion.
Is the road department in this?
No.
Road department is not in this.
Nope.
So just takes one oh one, one sixteen?
One, one oh one and one fifty-one debt service, county general debt service.
I heard the motion was there today.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippin, yes?
I got to ask, of course, if Teresa, you had a chance to look at this, you're clear on it?
Yeah, Kelly emailed it.
You don't see, you don't see an issue?
Which, I mean, we're basically already doing.
We're already. It's nothing we're not doing.
Especially on that twelve percent. Yes.
Matthew, yes? Is that your budgeting?
Yeah.
No, all your budgeting.
Is everybody all right with making this move?
Please.
Hey, I've got a question or one other. It's number nine. It says, earmark three bonus for three employees.
That's mine.
Is that true? Now, that comes out of a different.
The state, yes. That has likely to be with the county.
Okay. Again, are they going to, are these three employees, are they going to be eligible for the chem? Chris, the bonus also?
Yes, sir.
If you don't get a job, you work for Jackie.
Now, you can understand why we give little disregard. Nothing against them, but we see all these other members. We don't get anything.
They're going to get a double bonus.
All the Pope County employees go after them.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
It, that, that to me is a little bit of a screw-up.
Okay. In one oh one, I've already read seven, eight, and nine. I'm not going to read them again. So, uh, number ten, I don't think is correct anymore. Because it's the bonus that we just changed.
Wait, number ten's the bonus?
Ten's the one that you just, that wasn't passed.
Oh.
Ten is the high one.
Okay, all right.
Or they all, they're, oh, I got you.
Well, the lower.
We can, she can, as long as we've got the approval, she can put the checks and we can do the amendment next month, unless you've got some figures.
I'm, I was working on it.
That way, don't hold them up. As long as she's got it in the minutes, okay.
So do I need to do number ten?
Six, one, the lower one, the lower one. At one twenty-three? There's one of them left.
Yeah, I know. I know. None of them.
Mr. Tris, do you want to write one? You want us to wait? Is that what you're doing?
She's got a blank one. I mean.
I say, let's just, let's, can we skip ten, just as long as they know it's in the minutes that they're getting it?
I'm not sure that, I'm not even sure that I have all the budget amendments. Because I've just got a pile.
I, I don't know. Teresa, would you feel comfortable doing it and cutting it down?
We can, we can do seven, eight, and nine. I've already read it.
Motion to approve seven, eight, and nine?
Yes.
Fair enough.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
No.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippin, yes?
Yes.
Matthew, yes? Jackie, did that have Richard Taylor's in it for the home security?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, that was, that was number eight.
But y'all just said seven, eight, and nine?
Yeah, the eight and nine, and then he's looking for his others.
Yeah, I'm fixing to do twelve and thirteen. I don't know what to do with ten. One oh one, number twelve is for a total of twenty-two hundred dollars to reimburse West Pope Fire and Rescue back for purchase of funding supplies needed to complete Old Pope Fire. Uh, number thirteen in one oh one is twenty-five thousand dollars out of the undecided fund balance for general admin over equipment for the fire.
I'll make your motion clear.
Fair enough.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman? Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippin, yes?
Yes.
All right, and one sixteen? For a total of seventy-eight hundred dollars, that'll take funds for a one-time non-recurring bonus that goes with resolution passed.
Well, that's going to be.
Okay.
Yep, get rid of that one.
Let's skip that one, too.
Yeah.
We can go to one eighty-eight.
Amazing.
Okay, one eighty-eight amendment number one for forty thousand dollars uh, to fund maintenance on county buildings.
I'll get through.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is going to go forward some of that stuff, right?
Great. Yeah, I'm, I'm about six thousand in the hole.
Are we going to need more than that?
Because I, that's what I told you earlier.
You heard we're going to cut it up after we started discussing that.
Well, I, I said, this is my first time. I'll come back before you do each time.
Yeah.
That's why I think we need to get a running total of everything, so we can use the one.
Forty thousand is not going to do a whole lot.
And it's not going to do a whole lot, but that's what you asked for on here, so.
That time I'll come back and ask for more. I mean, I'm trying to, you know, keep it down.
Are you keeping a book full of receipts just in that?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Rob?
Yes, sir.
This kind of commission, to this kind of state, and they just had everybody kill us all with the trouble? Go for gold, man.
Go for gold.
Yeah, trust me.
Well, I mean, at the, and they need it. They need it. I'm just saying that we need to get a list of everything. Here we go.
Roll call.
Keith, Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yep.
John Pippin?
Yes.
Matthew, yes?
One eighty-nine, number two, um, I don't know. There's no explanation. It's a total of fifty thousand dollars.
Is this a veh, is he buying a vehicle?
Soon this is a vehicle.
It's not our money, though.
Proposed as a departmental allocated into it. Okay.
He's making money over to his vehicle line.
You get that debt money.
Any discussion?
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yep.
John Pippin?
Yes.
Matthew, yes? Are these, um, more stuff to score our records?
Yes, that's, yes, that's the attorney's thing, like, and I would just put him there just to get off in second.
We then paid that?
Yeah, we did.
I have numbers if y'all want to go ahead and do the bonus, so. Okay, we'll make it number ten? Number ten and eleven for one oh one. So that'll make number ten ninety-six thousand, one twenty-five. That dropped it from a hundred and twenty-three thousand. And it'll make number eleven, six thousand. That's for the sanitation workers. Ninety-six thousand, one twenty-five, and six thousand. Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippin?
Yes.
Matthew, yes?
And one sixteen, number two, for six thousand. That one requires two because it's two separate funds. And 116, number two, for six thousand, that one requires two, cause it's two separate funds.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh God, we got two things going on. We done got it.
Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
He's scared the dog.
I need a motion to suspend, suspend rules if we're gonna finish up.
Motion to approve?
What's the suspension for?
Surplus material from West Polk Fire and Rescue, it's been emailed and sent to you as well. Sorry.
Do we have a motion this second?
I second it.
Okay, roll call.
Y'all, okay.
I can't keep up with it.
I cannot.
Well, more than you can hear.
Hey, hey, I got a question, instead of suspended, why don't you go back up to where we had surplus property on the agenda, and we won't have to suspend?
We've already got it done.
It don't matter, you got to the end of the meeting to do anything else.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
So I have a total of thirteen pieces of equipment that will be coming from the West Polk Fire and Rescue to be put on our gun deal. If anybody wants to see those, I will be more than happy unless y'all want me to read all the end numbers and...
No.
Want to do a progress possession?
Resolution, John.
Resolution eleven and...
Five.
Five.
Seven, five.
Eleven, five.
Five.
Does it matter if it's...
Now, go ahead, you want to prove that resolution as presented, that's how it's presented, please.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's the same protocol, it was on the other, uh, surplus property, same cut section and everything's the same.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
Was there something else, Rob?
Um, where are we gonna put the fire troopers? We didn't have that on our agenda.
So, if y'all want me to make that decision, I will. If you all as a commission want to make that decision.
Did you need to do something on that?
Do we have a recommendation from the captains of the two departments?
I thought that was the other thing. I'm sorry, I got those... Uh, pardon me, Christie, I'm sorry.
Do we, do we have like a recommendation from the, the fire chiefs that one needs it worse than the other, what, do we know that?
So I had, I had conversation with both chiefs, actually on the same night, and asked them to rate three topics if we would, and the equipment, or see turnout gear for, um, the firefighters, I think that was how we labeled one. Equipment, or equipment, actually, equipment for the, for the personnel, uh, maintenance and vehicles. So, it came back, both fire departments rated equipment for the gear as number three. Uh, West Polk had said that their big concern was maintenance and maintaining and trucks. East Polk's big concern was trucks and then maintaining and maintenance. So based off of that, my recommendation would be for this truck to go to the Copper Basin Fire Department.
I agree.
I agree.
And the reason why I've done that, and I want everybody to understand before, I know how things get around. I appreciate these fire departments, I, I, I hope that we've all worked well together, I think they will say that, but it's kinda like you've got to make the decision because this truck's gonna go to one or the other. I'll be the bad guy, I'll take the heat.
But the good news is, there's more to come. And everybody's gonna get it.
You give away what you said most, what you looked at, you think you're gonna always talk to your plate and think it's like you're gonna get that truck.
In that depends, I had two others from the west side that had something, actually three, yeah, you're supposed to win two.
I have to give away your part of the...
Yes, sir, I'm gonna ask, because, um, first of all, I, I incredibly appreciate what y'all are doing, it really makes a difference. And I can tell you, West Polk has been absolutely the best bring of us and looked out for us every step of the way. There is a little bit of a difference between their needs and ours when it comes to trucks. Um, and so a question that just comes to my mind right now is, do we know the size of the tank on that truck?
Thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, okay, cause I was gonna say, if it's anything less than a thousand, they, they have a commercial district and we don't.
Correct.
So...
Okay.
We got to make sure this building is warm and it's thick thin and good shape, sealed up, not leaking, we gotta get all that squared away so...
We got a nice truck.
And if anybody wants, if anybody wants to see, see this truck, I don't know how fast the beaver is here, but I do have pictures of it, and, um, it is an extremely nice truck, especially for the age, I mean, I don't remember if it's a twenty-oh-one model, but this is pre-deaf, this is pre-deaf, this is pre-electronic, and mush will test to it whenever they engaged it to do a pickup, we had a hundred and seventy-five PSI coming out the other end of a hundred-foot holes in less than three seconds, mush?
What, two seconds?
It's quick.
It's quick. All holes is like if anything, it wouldn't be bigger than more, like it's coming from stock.
Alright, and that's, do you have anything else?
I don't think, I don't think the suspension, I think we got all of them.
Announcement statement?
I got one little quick thing I'd like to say, just so it'll be in the paper and everything, uh, and it's, uh, considered the fire. Lindsdale, we own our own building, so we're in worse, we're, we're up the creek a lot more than what other people are, because we gotta keep up our own building. So anyway, we're gonna be doing fundraiser at the tree lighting, uh, we're gonna be doing soup, chilis, uh, into-go cups, everything, so... Anybody that's around, the tree lighting day, please come out and support us.
November the thirtieth.
November the thirtieth, and if, and what if about rain day, have you got that?
We'll do the next weekend.
The next weekend on rain day. So anyway, so everybody come and support us all you can with that, and support all of our groups that has to raise money, as far as that goes, whoever they are, so...
One other quick announcement, if you're here and you're feeling like you really want to be a blessing, the formerly known as Angel Tree, now known as the Major Angels, because there's an organization that rings a bell, that said that we could not be called the Angel Tree. I didn't say it's a bunch, if you don't hear from that, I appreciate it. But anyhow, so the Major Angels are down at the port where you go out, stop by pickup for kids, Christmas, uh, help them out.
Have you got them on the tree now?
Yes.
Okay, cause I have...
The organization that does this, that's another thing, there's an organization that does this, I only help them out. This is not Robbie Hatcher's Angel Tree, this is not Robbie Hatcher's Major Angels, this is a group of volunteers in our community for all the kids in this county, regardless if they live on the east, or the west, or north, or the south, these are all children of Pope County. And we have two hundred this year, two hundred.
Any other announcements or statements?
I'd like to say thank y'all.
Thank you for doing all the hard work, we're sorry.
Something's better than, than nothing, and we appreciate it.
And just by negotiating it, just to make a point, we paid for our fire truck.
The Parks and Rec, Rob, the region, the county, in case y'all don't know, you need to be situated right now, take good advantage of that. We have the Parks and Master Plan, which is a qualification to get the grant, plus Bennett Restart County will get ten percent off, so a million dollars would cost us around four hundred thousand. Now, it's hard to justify spending four hundred thousand dollars on tennis courts when the fire departments are falling down. But, could we designate the area around each fire hall as a county park, take advantage of some of this grant money that's available, and use it at least for the exterior, the kitchens, the sheds, the little playground we put in, and make it a nice little place for each community to enjoy, perhaps get more volunteer work from it. And Parks and Rec could help out with the building itself, because like Lindsdale and, um, although it's not a county building, but Springtown, they already have community events there, picnics and, and things that are park-related activities. So they could be, so what, seven fire halls, seven parks, which qualify for way more grant money usually on a yearly basis than fire departments could qualify for. Um, and then we let the fire department keep the trucks in the park building.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's...
The only thing with that is, I don't know if that'd work with their grant that they're going after for, um, turnout.
I'd say a crazy idea.
I don't know how that would...
I think, I think it's worth entertaining, if it would work. Who does the grant?
Over to you, Charlie.
I already got some...
Let's go.
It's been a pleasure.